I now call the January 2, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I ask for the clerk to do the roll call, please. Linda?
Chairman Morgan?
Here.
Vice Chairman Chant? Commissioner McLendon?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Fuller?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Happy New Year, everyone. I'm now going to have the invocation done by the warden, Otis Wilson, and we'll follow with the pledge by Commissioner Montreal McLendon.
May we bow heads? Father and Him, we thank you, and we ask that you aid in God our chairman, our commissioners, to do the will and the business of the people, protecting the God and to lead this great county, this great community, this great state, in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. If I could have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Yes, to approve. Yes, to approve.
Motion carries seven zero.
At this time, we'll move into the approval of the amendments. Six one, the Board of Commissioners' Work Session Minutes from November 30, 2023. Six two is the Board of Commissioner Meeting Minutes from December 5, 2023. And six three is the Board of Commissioners' Executive Session Minutes from December the 5th, 2023. If I could have a motion and a second to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, to approve. Yes, to approve.
Motion carries seven zero.
Great, thank you. At this time, we'll move into public comments. Public comments are an opportunity for the public to address the commission with any issues or concerns they may have. All remarks should be made directly to the chairman and not to individual commissioners, staff, or citizens in attendance. Members of the public shall not make inappropriate or offensive comments. Any individual who violates the rules of decorum may be removed from the meeting. At this time, the board will not comment nor will the board take any action on the comments. And speakers are limited to three minutes. There was a sign-up sheet in back. Were there any signatures? At this time, is there anyone here who would like to speak during the public comment section? Well, seen and hearing none, we'll now move on into a special presentation. We have the Georgia Department of Corrections Administration Academy graduates Warden Otis Wilson and Deputy Warden Alex Rainwater. And then we also have Carroll County Correctional Institute OJT Certificate Program Chief Counselor Sherri Kimball. Let me find my notes here right quick. So, the Georgia Department of Corrections Administration Academy provides basic and specialized training for the Georgia Department of Correctional staff to better prepare them to accomplish the agency's mission of protecting the public, victims of crime, and agency staff by constantly seeking better ways to improve employee performance through training. We would also like to recognize, again, Warden Otis Wilson, that's a mouthful, Warden Otis Wilson for completing the Warden's Pre-Command. We would like to recognize Deputy Warden Alex Rainwater for completing the Deputy Warden of Administration Academy. And at this time, we'd also like to recognize Chief Counselor Sherri Kimball for her dedicated work with the state to offer on-the-job training certificates to inmates, empowering them with valuable skills for reentry. Sherri's efforts exemplify the positive impact individuals can have in providing second chances and improving lives. So if you would all come forward, and Otis, I hate to put you on the spot, but knowing that you are a minister and are used to speaking in front of crowds, would you like to give us a little, few words about exactly like how long in training you were to get the certificate? How long Alex was in the training? Or, I'm sorry to put you on the spot with that, but yes, please.
Chairman, we thank you for this opportunity. And the Warden Pre-Command class is 40 hours. And the Deputy Warden of Finances is three different sections, that Security, Finances, Administration. And our Warden, Deputy Warden, completed that 40 hours. Also, Ms., our Chief Counselor, Ms. Kimball, has done a wonderful job in completing the OJT training that the state administered through a college in, Central College in Macon. And she consistently came into second place. Coweta County and us, among the 22 counties, were back and forth in first and second place. And she deserves a great recognition for her work in getting so many OJT certificates to inmates so that they can have some success in getting a job when they're out. And I thank the county, we both thank the county, we couldn't have chosen and have two better associate workers with us. I also am thankful, goodness, I graduated from UGA this year also. So, we're just thankful and we appreciate commissioners for you backing us up, the chairman, and all of the county of Carroll County. Thank you.
We appreciate y'all. And I recognize, even though Otis talked about 40 hours, there's also travel involved. There's nights away from your family and from your friends. So thank you all for that. So if you'll come forward, we'll move up here too, and we'll get a picture. Okay, we're now going to move into the zoning session. The applicant or anyone speaking in favor of the application or their request shall be allowed a total of, goodness gracious, it's a brand-new year and I can't even get it right. The request shall be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present their request. Anyone opposed to the request shall also have a total of 10 minutes to present their opposition. If there are multiple speakers for or against an application, please be mindful to know that others may want to speak. There's only 10 minutes, not 10 minutes per person. Anyone speaking for or against the application shall also be allowed a total of five minutes to speak in rebuttal. We now have been skipper here from Community Development to go over our zoning, 9.1.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, this is a rezoning request of 815 Rupelville Road, Z-23-12-01. Zoning request from agriculture to commercial for an agriculture mercantile store at 815 Rupelville Road. The applicant is Jeffrey Smith. This property is within Commission District Five. The staff recommended approval with a stipulation that he must adhere to the proposed use. And any other uses would have to go back before the Board of Commissioners for approval. The planning commission recommended approval was unanimous, six to zero, approved with the staff's stipulation. And the reason for that was, I think he wants to sell his own beef, which is legal in Georgia under the Department of Agriculture. But if he was to buy a box of Twix or candy or Coca-Cola from Tanner's Grocery to have any store to resell, then it's much like a convenience store, and there's what trips the commercial. So it's not like he wants to be, he wants to be an old country store, but that one semantic is what triggers this. So, but, and that's why we just said it is what it is. Jeffrey, if you would, come forward, state your name, present your request to the board. And at the planning commission, we had no opposition.
Thanks for taking time tonight to hear me. I live on, at 815 Rupelville Road, the spot of land I'm asking for is about 4.83 acres, I think. It's in the midst of our 257 acres. So, we sell, I sell beef now in the sense of raised beef. I care, I'm not going to cut my beef there. It would be carried off to a slaughter facility to come back to sell it there, so I could cut it. And then also to make it a mercantile more to where I could have lots of different things to sell. On my application I put in there, it might have, I wanted to have a commercial kitchen in it so that if we sold Brunswick Stew or anything like that, it was legal for that side of it. Basically, what I'm doing now, nothing's going to change, except for the commercial side, selling something outside of what's zoned for there. So, that's the reason for the request. Ernie had come out and looked and saw the, I asked him to just look at it and make sure it wasn't. One of the questions on it, I think, was the roadway. There's lots of acreage in the sense of able to travel and everything, so I don't believe it affects the highways at all. The stipulations I'm fine with. The agricultural mercantile is what we're looking at. And the school, as close as we are, because we have a lot of cattle, we have about 100 head of brungus cattle. So, I'd like to be able to involve the school coming out to see, let the kids come and feed calves and stuff like that. So, it would, of course, enhance the business some, but as well be used. And then I would also like the buildings, we had looked at on there, there was a 30 by 40, give or take. It could be a little bigger, just according to what the actual dimensions. There are already barns and other things on there that falls all inside of this. So, just really wanting to make it for our community to sell fertilizers, anything you can think of that would be agriculturally helping our community and everything like that.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Well, seeing and hearing none, is there anyone, I guess we get to wave. Now, is there anyone here that wants to speak against the request? See what happens when you get like, you know, two holidays back-to-back and throw Thanksgiving and Halloween in there too?
Yes, really.
Something about that day after a holiday. Is there anyone here to speak against this applicant's? I'll make sure, I'll ask one more time, make sure I was clear. Is there anyone here to speak against the application? Well, seeing and hearing none, we don't need to move into the five-minute rebuttal. I'll ask if there's any questions from the commissioners for staff or for you, Jerry.
I don't have any questions. I did appreciate you calling me up, Mr. Smith, and the opportunity to go out there and see what was going on. I can say more later, but I have had no opposition calls or inquiries about it. I've had a couple people call me about it, but other than that, I've had no other feedback.
Yes, sir.
Jeffrey, this reminds me of growing up, since I'm from DeKalb County, was Mayfield Dairies, and they had rosebud, and we used to get to go out there. So I love that idea that you would be possibly open to having young children out to see farm stuff. So thank you for that thought process, if it pans out right for you.
Yes, sir. I'm a pastor in Newton, and I was a children's pastor for years. So, I have a lot to, mine ain't about money as much as we thank God for our farm. So, it's to enhance it some, but it costs a lot to manage one. So that's what I'm trying to make it where I can afford to keep it and keep it a farm.
Any other further questions? Well, seeing and hearing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with the staff's stipulations. The other comments that I have is that this does enhance the farm-to-table opportunities in our community, and I'm an avid proponent of that. I would like to see more of that so that we can have homegrown things available in nearby marketplaces. I know you're a longtime resident of that area, Mr. Smith, and I have known you for a long time, and I know you have several hundred acres there and take care of that area well and have the best interest in mind. I have also checked with our tax assessor because I had a couple questions about that, and I've been assured that there are no, the change in zoning would not have any impact on adjacent or nearby property values. With all that in mind, I stand by my recommendation. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions for the applicant for staff? Well, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Yes, to approve with stipulations. Yes, to approve with the stipulations.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move into the business session, and we have Chief Judge John Simpson here to do a presentation on our ARPA grants. I'm sorry, we have Sidney North here too, so in case the citizens hear another voice.
So, yes, thank you. I wanted to, we were making a technology request with respect to the grant, so I wanted to speak to you about that, and I wanted to say some general things. First of all, so if you would, click to the next slide. So, we thank y'all for working with us on the grant, and I do these bubbles to represent a lot of people we partnered with. Best of all has been the county commission. You've allowed us free rein to do this, and this has produced a lot of creative and dynamic activity, I think, in our court and the agencies that surround our court. So, yes, you can go to the next slide. And we're having a big conversation through the court system, through the sheriff's department, through the problem-solving courts. And a lot of change and activity is going on with our court. And so, you all have led with the Fifth Floor project. We've enjoyed working with that, and we said we want to come and kick in from our grant perspective. So, we're kicking in $300,000 on the grant to go with that project. That's the big thing that I'm about here. And, yes, you mentioned Sidney North, and I have to, you know, I have to say to you, she's done a remarkable job, and we have found the people we've contracted with, we've got the best people in the world. And where do we find them? We find them in Carroll County. She's a central high grad, and Robert Evans grew up at Bowden, he worked with us also. And we've been working a lot with Ms. Morgan, and Ms. Cersey, and Keith West, and it's just all made for a good team. And, yes, the next thing. And we enjoyed this statement being made about us early on in the process of the district court judge that manages the large district area pointed out that our Coweta Circuit has made the best use of ARPA funds in our district. And I happen to know that a lot of the forms and procedures created here are now used by the state in dealing with this grant. And I want to flashback to Sidney again for a minute. Just out of the blue, we created a grant for $2.5 million. And just like snapping your finger, they said, "We're awarding you $740,000." No notice, no anything. And Sidney went to work on this, and in a matter of a few days, she reworked things to preserve our $300,000 for technology and all the other programs we've got going from leftover funds from the previous year. So, great, great job with that. And this has really improved our jail days. We are in better shape today than we were pre-pandemic. We are in better shape today than we were pre-pandemic. And we're proud of the fact that we have used grant funds. And if you look elsewhere around the state, a lot of places you're going to look and you're going to say, you're going to see, they put it on the backs of their property taxpayers. But we have done this with our jail days, with our average jail days as compared to a couple of other places in our circuit. And if you look around the state, I think we've done some of the best of all. Okay? So here is the $316,600 for Court Rooms A, B, and C. This is something that very much needed doing anyway, and so we're taking advantage of the grant. And what, you have given us a $500,000 ceiling to operate under, and due to the backlog in reimbursement, I don't know, we're at around $300,000 or so that we've requested and have not had paid back to us. We were requesting that that, that you authorize the $313,000 outside of that, and so that we don't bump across that $500,000. Why does this take, why is there the backlog? I don't know. I am told that the OPB, Office of Planning and Budget, and the Administrative Office of the Courts are in a bureaucratic battle with each other. But we've not had any of our requests for reimbursement to be denied. We've had them delayed. We're in a constant state of delay. So we're two, three months behind in, in getting our reimbursements. So, next slide. Any questions?
So, Judge, I got one. So if we go ahead and forward to that 316, you feel comfortable we'll get that back at some point in time? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes. Everybody experiencing the grant has had delays in reimbursement. But we have not, it's, it's been approved at several levels where it is. So it would be an extraordinary thing if they said, "No, we're not going to give you the 313 now." I can't see any way that that occurs. I mean, they've, they have approved us at several different levels. We signed a contract with them to do this, and I, I feel that it's solid. But due to these two agencies going back and forth with each other, it takes a lot of time.
Okay. And thank you for kicking in y'all's part.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both. Normally we would do our November financial recap, but at this time, Alicia is unable to be here, so if you have any questions for her or for any of the citizens, they can reach out directly to me, but we will have this update at the February meeting. 10.3, resolution and public notice, debris from demolition of administration buildings. I'm going to call Danny Yates with Public Works Forward to present this item to us.
Thank you, Chairman, Board. On December the 14th, we sent out on the website, county website, asking for proposals to do crushing and grinding of the concrete, footers, slabs, sidewalks, asphalt, brick block, everything on the College Street Admin Building. We received two. One was for the price of $71,500. That was just to do the crushing. And we received another for a dollar of in-kind services, whereas we would do the trucking for the company and haul to his facility here in Carroll County. He has commercial property in Carroll County that we will be hauling to. And me and Mr. Avery, attorney, we have talked and discussed, and he likes the idea, I like the idea. I think we'll save quite a bit of money. So I'm recommending going with complete demolition services for a cost of the dollar.
Do we have any questions from commissioners?
Good job. Yeah, and just to be sure, the, when you say save money, you mean less than, the trucking cost would be far less than the $71,000.
Yes, sir. I mean, we're going to, we would probably have to truck it regardless of who crushed it. So we're going to be saving the money on the crushing itself.
Yeah.
Well, there's no further questions. I'll look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any further questions from commissioners? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Yes, to approve. Yes, to approve. I, I did have one question, and I guess I'm a little late, but this is with, this is with the understanding that we're going to crush on site and use some of that stuff at the base. We're not going to haul everything and hail it.
Yes, sir. We're going, we're going to try to negotiate a sum from Mr. Moorhead to keep on site. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, 10.4 is qualifying fees, a consideration of a resolution to set and publish qualifying fees for county offices for the 2024 election year. They are attached. I look for a motion and a second to approve, please.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Yes. Yes, to approve. Yes, to approve.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Now we have 10.4, the election of a vice chairman. This is the one person who, in case I'm not here, runs the meetings.
I'd like to nominate Steve Fuller. And I would also like to recommend to the Board that going forward, we just make this a, a position that rolls to every district. So I was thinking that since the first three here have all served in that role, Steve is number four, would be the next one up, and the next one would be District Five and the next, District Six, and it would just roll every year like that. So everyone gets an opportunity to, to sit in this role.
Do I have a second?
I would like to add to that conversation that while I certainly am in favor of Commissioner Fuller being, excuse me, being the vice chairman, Commissioner Reynolds, while I'm, I'm sure he is going to run for reelection, technically I think this is his last year of his current term. So I would ask the Board to reconsider to allow Commissioner Reynolds the opportunity, for whatever reason, if he was not reelected, he has had the opportunity to serve as vice chairman, and the next would be Commissioner Fuller, and the next, Commissioner Bailey.
Okay, so we're, the motion is for Montrell's to elect Steve as the supervi, excuse me, these department heads and supervisors for the election, excuse me, vice chair, and then rotate at five, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, is the motion on the floor.
Montrell.
Are you seconding that?
No, ma'am.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Steve.
Okay, I've, I've kind of gotten lost here. It's broken up. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what's going on. Can you do, yeah?
So Steve, there's a motion on the floor from Montrell to elect you as the vice chair for 2024, then with the idea that 2025 would be District Five, 2026 would be District Six, 2027 would be back to one. So it would be a rotating, instead of a picking someone every year, more of a organized thought process. We have a motion on the floor for that. I do not have a second at this point. But I'm happy to second it. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the votes. All those in favor of electing Steve Fuller for 2024 as the vice chair?
Opposed based off the information that I gave with clarification.
So Steve, are you a yes or a no?
Okay, am I voting for me for vice chair? Is that what I'm doing?
You want to talk, he might be able to hear you better, Montrell, since you're closer to the phone.
Yes, are you a yes or a no for the vote, Steve?
Uh, yes.
Motion carries, four, three. We need to ask for those opposed. Do we already?
I was going to say, I haven't done that yet. So all those not in favor, we know Clint said he was not in favor. Who else sitting here is not in favor, raise their hand. Okay, so Lynda, now the vote is?
Four, three. Motion carries, four, three.
Okay, great. Thank you. So now we have executive session that we're going to move into, so I'd like a motion and a second. And I'm not sure, Joel, if we will have any business to return. So we might, we might, we might come back and make a vote. So all those in favor of moving into executive session to discuss real estate?
We need a motion and a second first.
Yeah, I just said all those in favor. Oh.
Motion.
Never again, we have a meeting the day after the first. I mean, it's like doing Monday on a Tuesday, Tuesday on a Monday, but anyway, okay. I have a motion to move into executive session.
Yes.
Okay, so we have Montrell's a yes, and Clint is the second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries, seven zero.
Well, we didn't get a vote from Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Fuller.
Can you hear me now? Are you guys, just come into executive session, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, I vote yes for that.
And what about you, Clint?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we'll move down into executive session. Okay, we'll move down into executive se-
We're like hurry up, we'd be stuck here. Okay, this time I'll ask for a motion in a second to come back into regular meeting.
Motion to return to regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries five zero.
At this time, we will not be making any decisions on real estate, so I'll look for a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.